I'll call the meeting to order. Brony, would you take your role, please?
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. McGory. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Jackson. Mr. Zuloff.
Here.
Mr. Whalen.
Here.
Ms. Castile. Here.
We have a quorum present. The next item of business, colleagues, commissioners, is the approval of our minutes of October 27, 2021. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, it's approved.
The motions are second.
All second.
And a motion is second. Discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. First item of new business is an application by Sandusky, which has requested a similar, the approval of a similar use application. Is there someone, who in staff is presenting that? Is that you, Ms. Blair?
We're planning for Alec to present on teams as long as we can make that work.
I didn't know he was hiding up in the internet there.
Good evening. How are you doing? Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So, yes, I will be presenting the two similar main use cases tonight. We're going to start with 709 West Perkins Avenue, Unit F. This is for a similar main use application in order to sell firearms at this location. To give a bit of a background, is my screen presenting all right as well?
Yes, we're seeing Slide 1.
Okay. So, the current zoning of the town, on the adjacent, the adjacent zoning to the north is public facilities, the east is commercial service and general business, to the west is also general business, and to the south is Perkins Township Zone, general, commercial, and general industrial. Existing uses is pawn shop, retail location, and proposed use is going to stay the same, but they'd like to add the sale of firearms. So, currently, a strip mall location, all within a single property. The stores surrounding the location are shopping and restaurants.
You're fading in and out. It's hard to hear you sometimes.
Okay. I'm trying to keep the microphone close to my mouth. The current structure of this location is 5,367 square feet. Currently, the zoning does not specifically permit the sale of firearms or similar uses in the general business district. The general business district does allow uses permitted in our local business district, and the local business district permits the sale of sporting and athletic goods. Staff feels that a firearm may be interpreted as a sporting good, and that this could be considered a main use in the general business district. So, in order to determine this use as similar, we must follow steps here, and that is that the use does not create dangers to health and safety, or create offensive noise, vibration, dust, heat, smoke, odor, glare, or other lethal influence to an extent greater than normally resulted from other uses listed in the classification of the general business district, and that the use does not create traffic to a greater extent than other uses listed, and that the standards appropriate, specific safer are defined to, the application must also be specified in the permit. So, staff feels that the intent of this proposal is okay, given the fact that they are under ATF guidelines, which is fairly strict. We also feel that it does not exceed other permitted uses in the district as far as safety, noise, odor, and influence is concerned. So, in this case, custom work and automotive service is a use that's permitted in general business that would promote more noise, odor, et cetera, and that we don't, we also don't believe that it's going to create traffic to a greater extent. So, motels and group pubs are permitted in this district, and we feel that traffic from those two uses would not exceed the sale of firearms. Staff would like to note that the store is outside of the 500-foot threshold of a public area, in this case, it'd be Sandusky High School. So, ATF would be considered enough, we'd just like to point that out. The police department had no comments, as long as ATF guidelines were met, and the fire marshal also concluded that they had no comments as long as no ammunition was to be sold. We're talking with the applicant, no ammunition is planning on being sold at this time. The staff recommend the approval of the proposed similar menus with the following conditions, and that's that all permits are obtained through the building and the planning department, prior to ATF guidelines of purchase and sale of firearms are properly followed. Third is that no ammo is to be sold at this location without further analysis.
So, Mr. Oaks, thank you. A couple of questions. First, I take it from your report that the standard of review is whether the proposed usage exceeds noise, odor, or other influence generated from activities or otherwise permitted in the facility. Is that, is that the legal standard? Ms. Blair, you can answer that, and Mr. Hile, if you're on the line, you're welcome to answer that as well. And if someone can, can someone frame this for the planning commission so that we understand what our scope of review is? If, if we find otherwise than staff has suggested, are we free to make that determination? And if we make that determination, if it's reviewed in a court of law, what's the standard by which that's reviewed? I just want to get this framed a little bit so I understand what latitude we have in evaluating this proposal.
So, from my perspective, from the law department's perspective, yes, you can choose to, obviously, with any request, the planning commission is the ultimate decider of whether or not you're recommending this to city commission for approval. With certain requests, you can always put additional conditions on it. With approval, you can deny it, however that vote works. Generally speaking, final determinations from administrative bodies of the city are reviewed on an abuse of discretion standard by courts, which is a pretty high standard, I guess, is, if, in order to answer your question, Chairman Murray. Did I cover everything you, I think there was also a question about the, which I think Mr. Oaks answered, about what the, our ordinances require planning commission to consider, which I agree with Mr. Oaks, that's correct about the, the statement about the environmental health and safety considerations.
Okay. Thank you. Just helps to frame the discussion and evaluation.
And one other note, if you.
Please.
On page 5, that Chapter 11.09.11, Determination of Similar Uses, A, B, and C, those are the metrics of evaluation to say, you know, whether it causes more traffics, whether it doesn't create dangers to health and safety, offensive noise, vibration, dust, et cetera, that Mr. Oaks read in his, in his presentation.
Okay. All right. And then, one last question, and if I think of what it is, I'll remember, I'll go ahead, but if I've forgotten it. So, can I assure you, sisters and colleagues, any questions or comments?
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I have comments, maybe more than questions, but that I could characterize something as a question, no doubt. 500 feet from a school, because it looks in the, in the picture that's on our screen that, hard to believe it's 500 feet from the red box to the practice field, that's Sandusky School property, if I'm not mistaken. I don't need to hang on that, but I just wanted to raise that potential concern. Environmental health and safety, well, I'm not saying that guns are exceptionally loud, except when they're fired, and usually OSHA stuff is time-weighted averages and so forth. So, a few gunshots probably wouldn't be that offensive, but, but to say that we're evaluating it on dust and so forth is probably ignoring what really might be the concern with selling guns. I don't know where to go in Sandusky to buy guns. I realize you can go to Walmart and buy a gun, it's not like. And then, I think the city has been very engaged in trying to focus on gun violence, but realizing that it's not the gun that causes gun violence, per se. So, it was meaningful to me that Chief Oliver didn't have a problem with it, but, you know, I think while we're evaluating it in terms of its noise and dust, and proximity to schools, and the things that are set forth in regulation, I don't want to lose sight of, of to me is the really unasked, and maybe unanswered real question of, are we supporting selling guns in town at a pawn shop? And I guess I'm okay with it, I've just, let's, let's call it what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff.
Mr. Zuloff. I think far more relevant, when we said 500 feet from the school, are we talking to the actual school building? Is that what we're talking about?
Apparently, because it's not 500 from school property.
Yeah, I'm going to guesstimate it's less than 150 feet. The, the thing that's relevant, the way I understand Ohio law, there's this thing called a school safety zone, and the school safety zone is, can be a number of things, but it's the premise, one of the things is the premises of the school. It's, it's within surely less than 200 feet, probably closer to 100 feet, from a school safety zone. It's, it's the ball field back there, whatever it is. The green area is, is school property. Kind of conveying, if somebody were to step out of their car and walk, walk across that street, step into the lawn on the, on the edge of the street there, they'd be committing a felony in Ohio, I think. So, there's that. It doesn't matter where the school building is, what matters is the premises. By Ohio law and by, in principle, kids are probably more vulnerable out in the ball field than they are in, in the school. My understanding is, I'm not expecting any discharge of firearms with this application. As far as I know, it's still illegal to discharge a firearm at Sandusky, and you can't discharge a firearm anyplace but in a range, and we don't have any ranges, and ranges are kind of difficult and expensive to make these days. You need proper ventilation and all kinds of stuff to have a range. So, is it, we're not talking about discharging firearms, right? We're talking about buying and selling them. Thank you. I'm not sure we can, you know, come to any kind of consensus with the community as to whether, you know, whether we ought to be buying and selling firearms in this, in this city. We have a pretty mixed bag of views on, on those sorts of things. So, the question is, you know, is it, why is to do it in this location, in, in my mind? I'm skeptical because of the proximity to the school, and if you're going to have a pawn shop, kids can, I don't know, I imagine you're going to have students frequenting a pawn shop if it's around the corner to school. Of course, any kid can go to any gun store, or certainly go to any sporting goods store that sells guns, so that's not the issue, because they're presumably properly handled by the staff. But, that's what we're dealing with, right? So, I'm, I'm, I'd like to know if this question of proximity to a school safety zone's been considered by the staff, and I would like to know if there are any, if we know for sure that there are no state restrictions regarding the proximity to a school safety zone for an establishment that buys and sells firearms.
Let me address a couple of points, and we'll give staff a chance to weigh in. I'm looking at the federal law, and the federal law says with, that you may not possess a firearm within 1,000 feet of the grounds of a school, not a building, and it's 1,000 feet. I, I, I'm not sure where.
I was talking about Ohio law.
Well, Ohio law, they want to put guns in schools, so that's, that's a different set of laws. So, I'm not concerned about Ohio law prohibiting it, because they would simply encourage it.
So, federal law says within 1,000 feet, you may not possess, what is, what do you mean?
That's what I see.
If you had a gun, if you, not to defend it, but if you had a gun in the trunk of your car and you drove down Hayes Avenue, would you be in violation of federal law?
I don't think so. Yeah, it's different. Mr. Hile.
Yeah, we, I believe when this was first approached to the city, we did look briefly into this. The 1,000-feet rule does, in federal law, does not prohibit the establishment, the sale of a properly licensed and, and, you know, following all the federal and state rules gun seller from locating within the 1,000 feet, just because they're patrons who may exit the building, would be within that radius, so long as they are complying with, it's, you can't enter a school zone with a gun open carry under federal law. You can transport it through the school zone, so long as you follow, and I don't know them off the top of my head, but, but like, if it was in the trunk of your car, that is not a violation.
So, doesn't this make it, like, particularly on, challenging that you're risking, unknowingly risking violating federal law, because you're within 1,000 feet of a school zone, that somebody's going to walk in there with a gun in their hand into the store, you know, not, not, not knowing any better, not with no ill intent, but, you know, an unloaded, open-chambered weapon in, in, in their hand, you know, a shotgun pointed to the ceiling with the chamber open, might then still be a violation of federal law, right? Because they're not, they don't have it locked in a box, or?
I do not want to start getting into a hypothetical off. Generally speaking, for the store, for the establishment, this is not one of the concerns, so long as they're complying with the other rules that apply to the establishment for ATF. I don't want to speculate on whether patrons would or wouldn't be in violation of the federal law, because there are a lot of different factors that would apply there.
But, but is it safe to say there would be different rules for behavior within 1,000 feet of a school site than outside 1,000 feet of a school site?
There are, yes.
Okay. So, there are a bunch of exceptions, and I want to refocus our discussion on what we are supposed to be considering.
Sure.
And the, I hate guns. I'll just tell you that right now, and I'd require everyone to have a license and training, so, I mean, I think otherwise is insanity. But, with that said, the narrower question that we have is, does this requested use of the building, not necessarily by the patrons, does this request of the use of the building, is it sufficiently similar to its existing permitted use, such that it would be an abuse of our discretion not to grant the application? I think that is the question that's in front of us. Ms. Castile.
I just wanted to say that I'm not against the buying or selling of firearms, and I understand we're discussing, is it 200 feet or 1,000 feet? But I feel that it's too close to a school, personally. I know we need to evaluate based on those things you're saying. I also own a gun myself, so I'm not, I don't hate guns. However, I don't think that's in the best interest of the community to have firearms being sold right there in that plaza, within walking distance from the intermediate school and the high school, in my opinion.
Well, I, I agree with that conclusion, but I'm not sure that's a permitted consideration. I just, if it is, I would give that heavy weight.
So, again, I'm sorry, just for clarification, what are the permitted considerations? So, that isn't, doesn't necessarily pose a danger to anyone's health, just?
It might. So, it, this is on, our section of the code is 11, 1109.11, which is on, is on fifth page of our.
Yep, looking at it right now.
Okay. I mean, I, you could say that the use creates dangers to health and safety, safety.
I, that's what I had underlined. I just, it feels, and maybe in legal terms, it's not, obviously, I don't want to lead my judgment with my opinion, however, I do want to consider what I think the community might feel as well. So, if we, if, in my opinion, I'm not sure that's the best location to have a pawn shop that sells firearms.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Miller.
At the risk of digressing and expanding, I'd like to add another thought that might actually help us refine a little bit. I don't have a good understanding of what ATF guidelines all entail, and maybe a little better understanding of, is there something in the ATF guidelines that prohibit ammo, or why is ammo a such a offered consideration that they're not doing it, though they could potentially do it? I would be interested in staff elucidating on, on what the ATF, relevant ATF guidelines are.
Mr. Hile, are you able to address the question of the guidelines, Ms. Blair, or or Mr. Oaks? I don't mean excluding, it seemed like a legal question. It would seem to me, it would seem to me that part of the question here is, well, I mean, I assume the ATF requires background checks. I assume that that is what it's, registration and background checks.
I just can want to assume.
But I don't know.
I want to mention, we do have a representative from the applicant, Mr. Sexton, on the call. Mr. Sexton, do you want to introduce yourself and, and address any questions that have been coming up?
I was going to get to that, Ms. Blair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Let me finish this discussion.
Apologies, Mr.
I see the gentleman there, and will definitely invite his comments and thoughts. I just want to get all the, our thoughts on the table first.
So, I would not pretend to know all of the ATF guidelines that are applicable to this, but my understanding is the only major consideration is whether or not the actual location is within 500 feet of a school building, and the answer to that, I believe, according to Ms. Blair and Mr. Oaks, is no.
All right.
I can't speak to background checks and other things, but we could get a more detailed answer if, if, if the commission would like.
Okay.
If I may add to that, I had talked to a representative with ATF when the applicant first approached the city, and that's where I got the 500 from. She had said, because I, I'd, I'd mentioned that that was a concern of the cities, is the proximity to the school grounds. She had told me verbally that 500 feet from a building itself was the requirement, so that's where we got that from. Now, if that is completely true, I do not know at this time, but that's where we got that number from, a staff.
Mr. Whalen, any questions before we ask the representative, the applicant to whalen?
No, nothing right now.
I had one other question. We're sort of, on one hand, trying to confine our discussion and our decision, on the other hand, kind of expanding it. I think.
That's not, it's not after. We're trying to confine it to the considerations that are permitted.
Right. Right. And, and I'm going to defend my, you know, the, the judgment that I'm expected, I think, to, to make in these cases. It's deliberative, and we have to consider all the aspects, the impact of what we're doing here, and.
You have a point, so let's, let's get to it.
Yeah. Okay, the point, the point is, I'm going to have a really hard time and be worried about our perceived insensitivity to the world around us and what's going on, approving gun sales 100, less than 150 feet from a school grounds, given what's been going on. It's just, we're asking.
All right. Yeah, Mr. Sexton, you've heard our comments, and if you have any, if you have any preliminary remarks you'd like to make, you're quite welcome to do so. If you want to address the comments in due course after that, that would be much appreciated.
Very good. Thank you for having me. Yes, I would like to just kind of give you a background. First Cash is a public, publicly traded company, based out of, the corporate office is in Fort Worth, Texas. The, this location, and I want to clarify, we are asking for the similar use permit in order to not just sell firearms, but be able to also pawn firearms. You know, customers, you know, in the pawn industry, customers use their items to be able to present themselves a, a financial opportunity to get a loan, and a lot of times that's, it may be jewelry, may be TV, it could be a firearm. You know, many times, if they, they can choose to pawn a firearm or sell us a firearm. So, it's not just that we're going to be selling firearms, but we would, we would like to pawn firearms as well. As far as the, the school, you know, that was one of our concerns, quite frankly. We debated on whether to apply for a federal firearms license here or not because of the school. We talked to management, and just to clarify, the rule is 1,000 feet, and I'm looking at the general information, there's a school zone, you can look it up at ATF.gov, but the, the issue is that if you are within 1,000 feet, then you have to adhere to the certain guidelines. These certain guidelines are that the firearm is unloaded and is contained within a locked container, or a locked firearms rack that is on a vehicle. And, and we, we are familiar with the law, we are familiar with what's entailed by having a pawn shop close to a school zone. We go through an extensive training program just for our employees to be able to work with firearms. In these particular conditions, obviously, training with the school zone is an, is an additional piece of that training. I want to back up and just give you a little bit of information. First Cash, we have, we have pawn shops across the country, where, we have almost 900 firearm stores across the country in 20, 24 states now. And so, we have on staff, I'm the director of firearms. And so, we have on staff, I'm the director of firearms for operations. We also have a director of firearms of compliance, who is a retired ATF investigator. Our vice president of security and firearms is a 25-year retired ATF agent. We have a staff of firearm auditors who go to our stores periodically and audit. And we're looking for forms, we're looking at inventory. All of our firearms in every store is required to have a trigger lock. So, we have set the expectations very high, quite frankly, because we want to make sure that we do things right. We're a publicly traded company, we're not somebody that's looking to skirt the law. We want to enforce the rule, we want to do things right. And we want to be a part of the community. And, and in this particular case, we want to make sure that everything's as good as it can be.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Sexton?
I, I'm open to answer any questions. We do have, there are two people there. The store manager and the district manager of that pawn shop is actually there at the meeting. If you'd like to speak with them or have any questions locally that they.
They are, they are quite welcome to step to the podium and share with us their name, address, thoughts.
Dennis.
Yes.
Before we move on to them, I just had a question.
Please.
Of reviewing again what might be in line with what we could, I guess, object to. Could it be considered to create an objectionable influence to an extent greater than normal? For, for the purposes of being near the school and it, just that area just isn't sitting well with me. Because I feel like it does create objectionable influences.
I think how we interpret that is up to each and every commissioner.
Okay, but that's.
Discretion. So, I mean, if that's.
For you being an attorney and a commissioner, from your standpoint, that, that makes sense, that that could be considered an objectionable influence, though. Correct. For, for these legal terms, so that as I vote, I'm not voting based solely on an opinion outside of what is to be considered here.
As a fellow commissioner, not as a lawyer, because this is my area of practice.
Okay.
I, I feel that it is up for us to apply that as we see fit in good, in good faith, so.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Hello, I'm Tara. I'm the store manager at the, at the store. I do want to address, I know you said something about the school. So, we do see the kids get out of school and stuff. I can tell you, we very rarely ever get students that do come into the store. It is very rare. Now, we do get.
So, you rarely get what?
We very rarely get students that come into the store. So, I do know that isn't something that comes up, is the school. I do understand that. I did also bring a gun case to show you as well. So, any gun that comes into the store has to be in one of these. If they do not have a case, they have to purchase a case. So, when they purchase the case, the gun also has to be zip-tied closed. So, when we close the case, it has to be zip-tied closed as well. I did bring a trigger lock as well, is what those look like, that go on the trigger to where you can't pull the trigger as well. I've already been certified on the guns as well. I also own firearms, so it's not really scary to me. I know that you guys also mentioned background checks. Somebody does have to go through a background check to get a gun. If we feel they're not fit to have a gun, even if they pass the background check, we do not have to sell the firearm to them. If we feel something is not right, we do not have to.
If they don't pass the background check, you don't, you don't have to sell it, or you may not sell it?
We do not have to sell it, Tim. If we do not feel comfortable selling that gun to them, we can refuse it.
This is a critical point. If they do not pass the background check.
If they do not pass, we.
You don't have to, or you may not?
If they don't pass the background check, we cannot sell them a firearm.
Because that would be a violation, as you understand it, of federal law?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, I want to make clarity on that point.
And if they do pass the background check, if we don't feel comfortable selling it to them, we do not have to.
I see, I see your point now. I understood. Yes.
Tara, Tara, this is Scott. Let me interrupt just a second, if I may. I think the, the point that Tara is trying to make is, and we've had situations where a customer comes in and he's, we can tell that he's been drinking excessively, or we have smelled marijuana. We immediately shut down, they can fill out the application, they can, you know, we can run the background check, but we can choose not to do that transaction with that customer. One of the other things I did want to bring up is I know we're, we're concerned with students. First of all, to pawn an item, a person must be 18 years of age to be able to enter into a pawn transaction. To purchase a firearm, a person that is 18 years or older may purchase a long gun, a shotgun, or a rifle if they pass the background check. You must be 21 years old to pawn or purchase a handgun, which is a pistol or a revolver. So, I just kind of wanted to make sure that you understood those ages there. Most of the time, we, you know, kids could come in and buy a video game or a DVD. But most of the time, they do have to be of 18 or with an adult when they're coming in to, to make a purchase. Okay, thank you for the interruption.
Thank you. Patricia, Mrs. Zuloff, you had something to add?
Well, yeah, if you can be, I know that it's going to be a long meeting, but if you can be patient with me, because sometimes it takes.
Maybe if you just get to the point.
Get to the, yeah, but it doesn't help to rush me.
I might cut you off if you don't get to the point. That's, by the way, just so you know.
Yeah. I, I, I think I'm mildly delighted to hear that, that we're even entertaining, you know, being reassured that, that if a drunk comes in to buy a gun, that you won't sell it to him. It's kind of, kind of an interesting scenario I hadn't even considered. Anyway, you asked, I wanted to hear the rest of the, the comments before.
Were there, I'm sorry, ma'am, was there more that you wanted to add? I sensed that you were at a conclusion.
Oh, him.
No, no, he was, she was interrupted, I think.
Oh, no, it's, it's okay. The only thing I was going to talk about is I do got a picture of our gun room as well. It has three locks on it that has to be locked all day long. Only I have a key to that room and my assistant manager has a key to that room. Nobody's allowed in there except for me and her. Nobody can step foot in there, except for us. There's also examples on this as well, as they have to have, it's like a little squishy thing that you put inside the gun as well, to where it can't be fired. I know you also, he mentioned that if a drunk comes in, we cannot sell a firearm to them. And also, if they come in smelling of marijuana, we can, we cannot sell them a firearm as well.
Okay, thank, thank. Was there anything else specific that you wanted to present?
No, I didn't know if he had anything else, sir.
Do you, sir, have anything to add?
No, I think she covered everything. My name's Greg. I am the district manager.
What, your full name, please, sir?
Greg Ward.
Okay.
I'm the district manager over the store. I also do our Norwalk store, who sells firearms currently. Some other just security things. When these are locked up, they are zip-tied, so they're not, they can't be opened, you know, by their hands if they were to take it out to their vehicle. And also, security-wise, we do do a gun check for the Ohio stolen guns database on every firearm that does come in. And we have internal 24/7 security monitoring. Both our headquarters in Texas and then we have an independent company that checks it also.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Ms. Ca.
That I forgot about.
Go ahead, please.
Actually, never mind.
Okay, Ms. Castillo.
I just wanted to say, first off, thank you for sharing that. I feel confident that you all have your security down, that you're diligent and you're thorough. However, my concern, using your example, I'm more concerned about a drunk person coming to location and trying to pawn something, not in their right mind. They're bringing their firearm, excuse me, their firearm. You can't control how they're transporting it, if it's in a case or not. And they show up, you know, under the influence out of their right mind, and you can't sell it to them. And now they're angry in the premises within a school, 1,000 feet, whatever it is. It's, it seems to present objectionable influences, in my opinion.
Mr. Miller.
Obscure question, but I'm a fan of Pawn Stars. And I realize that's in Las Vegas. And somebody tries to sell a gun, it has to be 100 years old. Is that Nevada law? Or where does that, why do they draw that distinction? We're not drawing that.
What, what was the last part of the question? Sorry.
Why does that matter in the Pawn Stars and it doesn't matter to us?
With, like, that it's 100 years old? I'm sorry.
Yeah, they will not buy any gun unless it's, they can be assured it's an antique, which I think is at least 100 years old.
I believe that they probably do that just because of the monetary value, the collectibility of it. They're doing it because they want to sell it for big profit.
They say they'd be in big trouble if they bought a gun that was less than 100 years old. I don't know what that's from. I didn't know if that was ATF, apparently not.
I have not known that, though. Scott, I don't know if there's anything out there.
Yes, it, it, it's about being an antique and, and the restrictions of, there's not certain restrictions on antique firearms.
Okay. All right, thank you for that little bit of trivia.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm going to make sure everyone has a chance. Mr. Whalen, anything to add, sir?
I guess I'm still, still thinking this one through myself. I am personally not opposed to firearms or firearm sales, but I agree with the sentiment of how close this is. I'm not, and the other thing is too, I feel like our body is a safeguard along making sure we follow these rules, but I don't feel like we have a clear answer on exactly what that is today either.
That is the rule.
Is it 500 feet from a building? Is it 1,000 feet from property? Because it's, it's certainly less than 200 from the property, and it can't be a lot over 500 feet from the school. You go straight down. I mean, I wish we were just talking about this in another location. I don't know that it's a reason to say no yet, but I, I would certainly like to hear more. Even, my initial thought is it may be even tabling and getting a little bit more facts on what the distance requirements are. And is that even something that we should be considering, to my thoughts?
I don't know. That thought crossed my mind as well. We both want to speak. Should we flip a coin?
No, Mike, go ahead.
She went last. Mr. Chairman, I just want to make clear that when I vote on this, it will be based on whether this fits the ordinance. I, I would argue, staff feels that firearms may be interpreted as, as a sporting good. You could, you could also say it's in a class by itself, and it's not what we, we weren't talking about guns when we talked about sporting goods, or we would have said guns, because they are in a class by themselves and they've become even more of a class because of the current environment. So, for the record, if I vote against this, it's because I don't think it fits the ordinance and I don't think it's wise to do this. But I'll be considering all matters, and it won't be because I'd feel like an idiot for voting for selling guns 150 feet from a schoolyard.
Ms. Castillo.
I just didn't get a clear, I was kind of with Connor. I still don't feel completely clear. It's for sure 500 feet. What's the exact distance from the school? What is the point we're measuring? I still feel like it's closer than 500 feet, whether it's the field behind the building or the exit right there by Save-A-Lot. I don't know. It just, it seems closer.
It does seem as though the commission would like some more information on that very specific point as to whether, I think it's called a safe school grounds or something like that rule. Just my quick look here on the internet, which doesn't qualify as legal research by any stretch of the imagination. It does seem as though the commission would like a little bit more information about that. I was going to ask, you know, what the will of the commission is. Do you, does someone make, wish to make a motion with a second to approve the application? Or does someone wish to make a motion with a second then to table the application until we get additional information about the legality of this use at this location? Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, first, I would like to make the motion to table. And second, under discussion, again, referring to this picture. I, I know we've talked about the distance to the athletic field. That's certainly very close. But this picture shows student cars parked in the parking lot that are clearly within, I would say, 300 feet or certainly less than 500 feet to legally park student vehicles where presumably handguns could be legally locked up in the trunk or whatever. I just, I, I think the distance thing is worth pursuing.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Brownie, would you call the rule, please?
Mr. Chairman.
It's a non-debatable motion, Mr. Zuloff.
Tabling is not debatable?
Tabling is a non-debatable motion.
All right.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
No.
Ms. Castillo? Yes.
The motion is tabled, subject to further input from the law department. I want to thank you folks for presenting tonight and, sir, for being available for this conversation. It's an important conversation. And we're just going to get a little bit more information and, and we'll take it up presumably at our next meeting.
Very good. Thank you for having me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our second.
Yes, Mr. Miller, could you go ahead and present the second one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Second similar man use, we have Crossview Bay LTV application to turn this property into, what they have told me is a luxury RV park with transient occupancy options as well. The site is currently zoned for commercial recreation. To the north is the Staneski Bay, so there's no zoning to the north. To the east is commercial recreation. To the west, we have general business, Segal Family Residential, and also general business, commercial services. To the south, we have residential business and then commercial recreation. Existing use of the property is currently marina and storage, and then also vacant property. The site requires, there's a total building coverage of 12%. There's five parcels, and three of those are undeveloped vacant. And then one parcel, it's marina and the other palm. The existing commercial structure is about 93,600 square feet. The applicants were proposing a community center and an, excuse me, an apartment. And they wish to make this land a luxury recreational vehicle park as an amenity to the existing marina facilities that is also owned by the applicant. Sites will be available to rent to customers outside of. And is in for the public to bring their removable structures available for transient rental. Some will be available for transient rental on site that the owner will provide, whether that be an RV or a mobile home of some sort is to be determined. Camping will not be permitted, and there will be marina staff on site to operate. During daytime hours, and onsite management park is planned. Being open 24 hours a day, with quiet time from 10 to 7, maybe 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And, but the marina itself will be expected to be a year-round.
Mr. Oaks, you're fading. Mr. Oaks, you're fading in and out. We can hear about, Mr. Oaks, we can hear about two-thirds of your words.
I hadn't heard.
I don't think he can hear us.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we ask him to repeat the last two minutes anyway. He's got to speak slowly. He's got to speak louder. When he speaks loudly, we can hear. When he speaks quickly and quietly, we can't hear. So, please.
That's true. If, either, and Ms. Blair seems as though, as though she might be volunteering. Um, I, I'll leave it to you to sort out whether it's you or Mr. Oaks who will take a run at it.
My apologies, I'm sorry.
I think your internet might slow down a little bit. You want to try like two more sentences? We'll see how it goes. If not, I can just jump in.
Sure, I will try to review the relevant facts about this proposal. So, the site has 59 spaces, um, for RVs, recreational vehicles, other sports. They plan on putting a community center, an outdoor pool, both other amenities for the state to be active on site. Uh, they want to make it a beautiful park as an amenity to the existing.
Alec.
Yep.
Why don't you go ahead and just mute and I'll, I'll jump in? Because you're, I think your internet's just fading in and out a little bit. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Okay. My apologies.
No worries. So, the proposal has, uh, in the report here, it notes 59 paid parking spaces for RVs and vehicles, also a community center and an outdoor pool. They are planning to operate the facility from, with quiet hours from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Um, they do, they were talking about having potential sites where they could do transient occupancy, whether they were providing an RV for someone to rent. But mostly it would be their marina customers could bring an RV and stay on site. And then there would be sites available for rent from the, from outside customers as well as they were available. Um, they are proposing a park and, um, we'll talk about that a little bit. So, we do have a presentation from them on the site plan, but the similar main use application that you have here is mostly just to determine whether the RV camping would be allowed based on, as a similar main use application. So, similarly to everything that you just reviewed from the previous similar menus, you know, is it going to be, cause more traffic? Is it going to, uh, be, you know, danger to health and safety, et cetera? This zoning currently allows hotels. It allows transient occupancy. Um, it just does not specify RV sites. There's not really anything in a good definition to the zoning. So, we believe that it's very similar to a hotel use, the marina use, as far as like traffic noise, smoke, odor, et cetera. Um, but, so the application that, for the similar main use is about the RV park. See if I missed anything. So, arenas and stadiums are also allowed. This definitely would not generate more traffic than an arena or a stadium. Race tracks and shooting ranges are allowed in this zoning category. So, I would highly doubt that even in an RV park, you will have people outside. We didn't expect people outside around fire talking in the evening, but they do, they did stay there to have quiet hours at 10:00 PM. Um, we can't see that, that the noise generated would be more than those allowed uses. So, staff recommends approval of the proposed similar main use at 1231 First Street Parcels with the condition that all applicable permits are obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, Planning Department, and any other applicable agency.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Blair. Mr. Miller.
Yeah, um, I envision sort of a chicken and egg problem here. I, I noticed the next item on the agenda is a presentation about it. And in some sense, it seems like it would be helpful to have the presentation before deciding if this is in fact a similar main use. On the other hand, I can understand why you set it up this way. Why do the presentation if it's judged to not be a similar use? And I'm fine to say, I think it seems plausible as a similar use, but yet I kind of would like to hear the presentation before I vote on that.
Well, there are representatives of the owner here, I understand, and, uh, wonder if they wouldn't mind making the presentation or if there's an objection to that.
I would add a comment. So, the, the presentation is largely about their site plans. So, it's kind of a preview. They, they expect to bring you a site plan application in January, assuming the similar main use would go through. They are not looking for approval of their site plan tonight. They're looking for just your comments so they can, um, make a couple of updates and probably bring you the site plan in January to vote on. That, I think, will get in a rabbit hole about like what the site looks like and how it lays out. I mean, we certainly can. That would be up to your discretion or Brendan has different direction as to whether we can do the presentation or how the motions work, because I feel, still feel new at that. But it is two different things. Like, can they do RVs, 57 RVs as a similar main use application? And how those RVs will actually lay out and look on the site are really two different conversations.
Miller, what's your wish?
Yeah, I, I can accept that, but I, I, I think other people might resonate with, sell me before I vote as both a vote and then, but, but I understand this is just laying out the roads and, and that stuff. I, I get it. I, I don't care. I'm fine.
There's no comments?
Having some more detail would help me also decide, just because I don't have a lot of background to really even picture, uh, what would be similar, what, what I'm dealing with. But I can vote without it.
I, I didn't understand the, you, you're saying you don't want a vote tonight?
Uh, the similar main use application is a, an agenda item on the vote tonight. The site plan is a conceptual review.
Thank you. Okay, no, I, I didn't quite follow what you're, I, I, I get it now. Right. Is it, the question before us is, is it a similar main use?
Correct.
What is the will of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to vote. I would, I would, um, like to accept the staff's recommendation to approve this as a similar main use.
There's a motion and second. Further discussion on the motion to permit the, the similar use. Ms. Brownie, would you call the rule, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
You got a lot, got off a lot easier than the last vote.
They're going to be selling guns there, aren't they?
So, I.
It's fine there, there's no school.
Ms. Blair, is this where you expected that we would, uh, see the, the presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to tee it up or?
Sure, I would love to. I brought you all a nice big printout. Since we didn't interview it ahead of time, I thought we might have to interview it. Okay. I'm going to walk you through my understanding of the site and some of the conversations we've had with the developer, the developer. And then we have our applicants here ready to come up and chat with you as well. So, just a really high-level walkthrough. What you're looking at is the bay is to the left of the image. So, we've got, we're flipped. So, just a little bit of orientation. First Street is to the right. So, that's the, you know, directly to Cedar Point, basically, if you keep driving to the First Street. Um, the big, the big, Alec, I think you're not muted, so I just heard some rustling on your end. Um, the big diagonal you're seeing is a right-of-way for future, um, Sandusky Bay pathway to come through. That's not a, an easement in place by any means. It's just the old railroad right-of-way. But we've had conversations with them about, about how that pathway might come through this site and they're saving room for that. That, those details will be engineered later. So, what we're kind of looking at is how, I think they have 57 in this updated site plan, so, um, and the applicant can, or the, uh, potential developer can talk about that. They have, um, buffering, so like a mound. I thought I'd be able to highlight stuff on this screen for you. Let me see if it'll let me. Oh, I'm used to Adobe Acrobat Pro and this is Adobe Reader. I usually can highlight stuff. Let me zoom around a little bit. So, right at First Street, there's a mound to screen the site from the traffic on First Street. And then the entryway would bring you in. There would be access gates to come in. They'd have a check-in area in their existing building. Uh, they also would have trash screened, you know, dumpsters there. They're proposing, or they, they could be proposing conceptually, um, a central space where there's a pool and a bath house with some parking there, just like you see in campgrounds where somebody could take their vehicle to the bath house. Um, the way that the check-in process would work is there's plenty of room for that up around in the marina area. Um, and then they're also, on the site plan, they're showing kind of a park green space along the sidewalk. So, they said they put some swings out there and kind of make this a nice amenity for the campers and also plan to do some work on the break wall to make that eventually accessible, which I think is a great, um, a great investment for that parcel in the city and that water access. Another thing to mention is, so, the site back requirements of this, uh, land use or of this zoning category is typically 40 feet, but that would be for a building, for a structure. So, there's no setback requirements for putting a slab of concrete down and parking a vehicle on it. Um, so, similarly, if we were going to approve a parking lot, they could park right up to the edge of their property. Uh, since there will be, you know, humans on, in RVs inhabiting this space, we talked to them about making sure there was good buffering to the neighbors, because it's basically like neighbors' backyards on the other side. So, they said that there's a ditch there. There's, uh, there's quite a bit of trees and brush and a fence. And so, they plan to maintain that as a buffer and like a visual screen between the site and the neighboring properties. Um, they have a dog walk area and some green space in this kind of central lobe of the potential conceptual development. So, overall, the features, there are 57 sites in this site plan. There's a pool in the park. There's screening and landscape. There's improvements to the break wall and the bike path connectivity, which we all see as, staff sees as, um, really great things. Some of the comments that we have addressed and discussed with them is kind of a little bit more about how the entry and the exit gate might work if, when the pathway comes in. That would need further design and detail and we'll get there in the future when the pathway is ready to come through there. Um, they noted the pavement types and some, um, like the traffic patterns that was based on some of, uh, engineering department's com, concepts. And they've added some landscaping and screening based on our direction.
You said something about engineering department, I couldn't hear.
Yes, engineering department asked that they show the traffic patterns of the roadways and note.
Did engineering say anything about stormwater retention or?
I was about to get there. So, outstanding recommendations from staff is that when they apply for site plan approval, that they show their proposed lighting plan and then also, um, have some kind of slope analysis, drainage, or site, site grading plan that they can show us. So, that's things that we have asked for them, um, to bring to you with, when they come forth for approval. And then we are confident that we can figure out how the bike path would work in this site in, in the future when, when we are engineering the bike path. So, that's the extent of, of the notes that I brought for you today.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Commissioners, questions or comments for Ms. Blair?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Miller.
Comment first. Generally, I'm kind of excited about the prospect of, uh, luxury RVs that are not having to rent from Cedar Point. I mean, given an option, I might have friends or family someday. But in, in the more immediate future, what if that pathway never follows the railroad right-of-way? Is there some contingency planning for the pathway to go across in front of that property on First Street, just in case that other never really materializes or not in my lifetime?
That's a great question for Aaron Klein, because he's led all of the pathway discussions. My understanding is that environmental design, when they were designing the pathway, did look at alternatives and they have kind of backup plans for those sort of things. I don't know off the top of my head, the right-of-way on First Street and how much room there would be to, to have a facility along that corridor.
I mean, from this diagram, it doesn't show anything, right? I mean.
Correct.
So, Mr. Miller, I can address a little bit of that. So, the, the hope is that the, the pathway runs along the, the lines that are suggested. Um, but, you know, we don't have, uh, the city does not yet have site control for every single, uh, piece or parcel, excuse me, piece. Um, and so, they are working on that. They're actively working on that. Um, I think you've seen that in a couple of things that have been voted on by the City Commission last year. Um, but, but that's Plan A. Plan B is to run it along First Street, but it's a much less desirable option, to be certain.
And I understand that, so I'm just kind of asking, I, I think it would be great and eventually one day to have it along the railroad right-of-way, but I understand there might be some formidable opposition to that yet. And it could be years in acquiring that right-of-way, um, or easements or whatever are necessary. So, I'd hate to give approval to a site plan that didn't provide for the interim measure of me being able to ride my bike, you know, safely along there and while I can still ride a bike.
I would echo your comment. We think this is a great use of this site. We, we have been in conversation with Hody about, about that, that is a short-term use. I mean, long-term, this is probably a development site, but right now, it's, it's not going to pencil, but putting RVs, we have the access to the city, the access to Cedar Point. Uh, we absorb some of that transient rental desire and, you know, have, able to bring in more visitors into the city proper. Um, I think it's fortunate that we have somebody at the table that is, that says, yes, we'll, we'll leave space for that pathway, because not every property owner would do that.
Uh, but more generally about the RV itself, um, I, I've watched in regional planning, this being argued back and forth in the perk for quite a while. I don't see those kind of objections here from, from the neighbors. If you look at the success that Cedar Point has had in a similar kind of layout with expensive RVs, they must have made the decision that that was more profitable than their hotel and their restaurant and all the things that they tore out to put in more RV sites. So, I get it. I think having a, having that amenity with a bay view is, is excellent use of that property compared to just marina buildings that you can't see through.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zuloff.
Uh, I would agree with Mr. Miller that I think this is an appropriate use of the land. It's brilliant. I don't know why somebody didn't think of it before. Anyway, I would design it a little differently. I would try to vary the site sizes a little bit to more efficiently use the space. I might cluster the individual sites a little bit more and allow a little more breathing space rather than, rather monotonous, uh, feel. You know, if you're, if you're going to live there even for a weekend, it's going to look like, you know, long rows of, of, uh, RVs. Um, I'm a little skeptical of some of the green space labels that are, well, a particular one near the mound at the front. I mean, if you're going to take a little bit of breathing space and call it part of the green space when there's that, what, the, the space label of green space has three RVs on it. So, is that really green space? I don't know, I suppose, arguably, depending on how the mound is, uh, uh, and, and we're looking for reactions here, right? So, I don't think it's out of order to just talk about design and aesthetics and, and ideas like this. Uh, I would make the mound a little bit, maybe a little bit sinuous, kind of think of it as maybe even letting trees grow on it and, you know, let it be, uh, even more of a buffer than something you have to mow. Um, make it look like it's almost a natural feature rather than a, that somebody ran a bulldozer down it, pushed up a mound and, and made it look like a constructed mound. Um, I think it'll look, it'll look nicer in the long haul if it looks like almost a natural feature. Um, uh, but at, at the end of the day, um, it's pretty dense. Uh, I don't think we're going to have any trouble with either water or sewer. We got an interceptor there. We got a, you know, a water main on First Street. So, uh, again, instead of making it, it is on a dense side. I think somebody's going to want to throw a frisbee or something somewhere there if they were living there. I know, I know mostly this market is probably, I don't, I can't, I can only speculate at your market analysis, but I, I guess that in our particular area, a lot of these, um, attendees, your, your, your customers are, are, are here to park their RV so they can go to Cedar Point, maybe even competing with the RV park at, at Cedar Point. Um, yeah, but not necessarily all of them. And I don't think they're too tight. I'd think they could be tighter. I'd rather, uh, me, I'd, if I was a customer here, I would, uh, a temporary resident here, I'd rather, you know, have them maybe even a little cozier and, uh, uh, with, with, with more, with more green spaces. Um, I don't know if we, do we even have standards for density, uh, in, in, in this sort of, uh, in an RV park? Maybe we should, I don't know.
No definition for it.
Yeah.
So, all the discretion that you have to, for the site design would be through the site, site plan process, which gives you the overview of, you know, are things reasonably organized? I can't remember what the first line is, like the intent of the site plan approval process, that, the circulation and the.
Sure. Well, I, I can't imagine you're not going to have at least somebody objecting. Well, I, I can't imagine you're not going to have at least somebody objecting to, to the, to the west, you know, the residential uses to the west aren't, aren't going to raise some objection, but, you know, clustering and, and try to, you know, make, maybe make some of the drives, if you have long and short, to accommodate long and short RVs, might allow a little bit more setback from, from the adjoining uses too. So those are just the thoughts and I'd like to see what engineering has to say about, about stormwater detention and, and that sort of thing. Did, did you say you were going to get to it and I don't remember you getting to stormwater detention?
So they didn't provide a grading plan at this time, and that was something that we encouraged them to provide for the site plan applications, because since they're just looking for a conceptual review today.
Right, so.
And Josh has asked for that as well.
Yeah, and, and, you know, dry swells are pretty, are pretty crummy, green space, but, but, you know, wet detention can be very pleasant. Looks like a pond, right? You know, so it can be nice, can be an amenity. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Additional thoughts or comments? Understanding he's not here for a vote.
Anything to vote on here? Hmm? Is there anything to vote on here?
No. I was asking additional questions for comments, understanding that it's not for a vote today. Thank you.
Hear from them too, or just from me?
They'd be delighted to hear from me if you have something you'd like to add.
With Hody. And I want to thank you for the similar, similar use acceptance. And this for us as a project is very similar, because what we see in the RV industry is the exact same thing we see in the Marina industry. So it's luxury, it's upscale, and the intent here really is to market to our 600-plus boaters at the two Marinas on First Street. So, you know, we see it very similar, the power requirements, the lighting requirements, very similar to what you see on the docks, but just on land. The transient nature of it, it is very similar. So again, appreciate your, your approval, appreciate your comments and feedback. We're looking to finalize the development of the site, the engineering aspects of it. And again, we're, we're very excited about it.
Mr. Chairman, just one more injection here. Dark sky lighting, we, we, we're, we still don't have an ordinance, one of these days we're going to have it, but be sure to make sure you get full cutoff, better fully shielded fixtures.
So typically what we have, what we have for site lighting.
What's that?
Typically in a RV park site lighting, you, you don't have site lighting, you don't have overhead lighting. You may have wall packs on buildings, but the individual campsites.
Right.
Have a ground light that sits about this high.
And even with those, there are plenty of little bollards and stuff that aren't compliant, that shine the light up in your eyes and up to the sky and waste the light and are annoying. Just make sure that those only send light downward, not up in your eyes and, you know, like the sky.
We can, we can submit the specs on those.
They have standards for those, there's dark sky standards.
Yeah, we can submit those when we submit the final plan.
Very, very good, right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I just want to add to, to underscore, no, not, not, not for you, sir, I'm not, just to underscore what I think is a very important point that Mr. Dulaugh makes, is we do really need as a city to have some kind of dark sky or lighting regulations. We've talked about it for years and they don't seem to be able to get anywhere with it. I, I will point out as a hideous example what we have at Sports Force right now. That is just the most god-awful installation with light that is, I mean, we might as well have a, we might as well have a greenhouse like they have in here on there, when they're, when they're lit up in the morning. And, you know, they'll just have somebody, I go over there to the, to the gym there and the, the Jewett Center, and they've got the whole place lit up for some guys running the sweeper, you know, on the, on the plastic grass at, at six o'clock in the morning. There's no excuse for that.
Well, that actually gets covered, Mr. Chairman, in, in the, in the model ordinance. It, it's like when you light, for example, you, let's face it, if you're going to play a nighttime baseball game, a pop-up's going to go, you know, could go a couple hundred feet up in the air, you're, you're not going to have 200-foot tall, you know, fixtures sending the light. So there have to be certain exceptions, so, you know, you're not going to, you're not going to be fully compliant in everything at Cedar Point Park either, but what you can do is you can set reasonable limits and you can set luminosity standards. And all this covered, it's, it's really tough right now, because, because of LED technology is moving so quickly, the real challenge is that it's changing fast. Now, the good news is it's sort of stabilizing. We're pretty much now everything's LEDs, so you're, you're, you're no longer fighting with, with CFLs, with, with mercury vapor lamps and although low sodium, low sodium lamps are, are still, you also have the astronomers who, you know, worry about being able to learn something about our, our, our universe. But we can get there, we have to just find, make it a priority and, which is tough, because, you know, although now, you know, now our staff has plenty of time, because now we're fully staffed and they got lots of time and, just kidding.
Not yet. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Dulaugh. Did you have something else, Mr. Miller? Yes?
Yes, I, I, I wanted to both reinforce Mr. Dulaugh's concern about dark sky regulations, but expressed his potentially differing opinion about what he was describing as a better layout and clusters and so forth. I'm, I'm well familiar with PUDs as opposed to the typical, you know, like uniform lots and straight streets that you can carve out additional green space and make aesthetically more pleasing features. On the other hand, I have in my mind the model at Cedar Point and could envision myself driving one of these behemoth rigs valued more than, than my retirement is worth to have straight in and out. These are obviously drive-through slight sites and clustering them like houses in a PUD would make it problematic for backing in units or getting them out. I mean, th- these are drive-through situations that, that people who even aren't professional drivers trying to wield an expensive piece of machinery can get in and out of, and I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. We have next on our agenda, and thanks, thank you for being here, we'll turn to another subject. You're welcome to stay or welcome to, to leave. I sort of put in play an invitation, I guess, to have a, a conversation about small box regulation. And I think I share the view of the concerns in terms of how it is that what we call drugstores today are, are going to change. And the thought is that probably the single, single largest beneficiary of those changes is moving away from kind of a sundry store model to more of a medical delivery model is going to be just a fantastic benefit for the stores like Dollar General and, and other stores like that. And, you know, we, we have a, we've had a conversation in, in our community for years now about getting additional grocery stores into the community, especially into the downtown area. And everything, every single time one of these stores pops up, it really inhibits the ability to get a grocery store in town that can compete, because of the cherry pick. It's expensive to have fresh foods and it's a whole lot cheaper to just have boxed items, dry goods and cans. And so, but that doesn't promote the, the health of the community. So I just wanted, I, I'd ask Ms. Blair to share with us some models of what other communities do. She shared a lot that was very helpful and something that I just thought we'd have a conversation about tonight. Ms. Blair, do you have a presentation you'd like to make or?
I had a couple, just a couple overview points.
Okay.
From memorandum. So my understanding, much like Commissioner Murray just mentioned, that when, when cities are starting to regulate these, it's because they desire to, to ensure that everyone has access to healthy foods. And so what they, what I've seen them do, and like the story you told, is what they're, what they're defining is like small discount retail, is generally what I've seen in the definition. It's kind of like a picture, like a Dollar General. They come in and they sell packaged food only, which is cheaper and easier for them to do, but what, what happens is they make that market uninhabitable for a grocery store, because somebody's already in there selling the bulk of what's easy to sell. Those packaged foods are easy to sell, they last a long time. So a grocery store is going to look at that market and be like, oh no, I can't go there because Dollar General already has a corner on that. So what happens is then you don't have healthy food access. So what the regulations are kind of trying to do is define what that small discount retail is. And then I've seen, most commonly, and you can see in the code examples I cited, that like they'll put, like they have to be a, a specific distance apart from each other, like a half a mile or a mile apart. And then there's regulation that they must sell fresh produce in a lot of these examples. So they'll say like 10% of the floor area has to be dedicated to fresh fruits and vegetables, something like that. So if you have a market that Dollar General is really interested in, Dollar General is not the bad guy in this story, it's just an easy example. If you have a market they're interested in entering, then they will dedicate a specific section of their store to fruits and vegetables. So you do have a more of a functioning grocery option for the community rather than just packaged foods.
Yeah, so the way it worked, as I understood in the examples, is if it has that fresh food area, then it's exempt from the spacing limitation.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen that. So there, in a couple examples, and I can tell they copy and pasted from each other that I gave you the zoning code language from, they created a healthy neighborhoods overlay district. And so they, and, and whatever that is for that city, maybe it was like a specific neighborhood or with us, we probably would want to think about where our most dense neighborhoods are, if we have a food desert, we could coordinate with, you know, the public health or. So regardless, you, you know, draw whatever boundary that is of where you want to create this healthy food neighborhoods overlay district. And then they'll allow examples such as uses that dedicate a minimum floor area to the sale of fresh meat, fruits or vegetables, that they would be exempt from the distance standards, creating those like minimum, maximum distance standards if they're not going to sell fresh foods. One of them has the grocery store, like they reduce the minimum parking ratios for grocery stores, so it was easier for a grocery store to come into that community, which could be something that I could think could be really applicable to Sandusky, because we're so dense and walkable of a city. And really, like, we have a historic density, plus a lot of people have cut up big historic homes into multiple apartments. We have, we have a pretty dense community, so I think that, you know, reducing parking ratios could be a really viable way to maybe attract groceries as well. So the one from Mesquite, Texas notes like that those stores would be at least 5,000 feet apart and 10% of floor face, floor space dedicated for fruits and vegetables, period. Like they're saying like you have to meet both standards. What else? I point, I highlighted the Birmingham, Alabama definition, so they define a grocery store, a small box discount store, and then a convenience retail store. So some of these definitions, I think, are really applicable, interesting for the research. They regulate that the, in the, in their healthy food overlay district, they mu- must not be closer than a mile apart, which I don't know how relevant that would be, because Sandusky is a lot smaller city than Birmingham, Alabama, so we had need to think about that. The city of Cleveland actually adopted a citywide moratorium of the construction of new dollar stores in June of 2020, and they have yet to resolve that from the news that I found, so I thought that was interesting. They were just like, none are allowed, which they're legally allowed to do, but I think you have to have a defensible end time to a moratorium. So if you were concerned about this coming to our market, that could be an option that we would definitely want to get Mr. Howe's legal counsel on, but you could say like they're not allowed until we figure out this legislation. To my knowledge, we don't have anybody sniffing around any interested, you know, discount retailer stores to come into the community, but that's just an option I wanted to share.
Well, we certainly don't want to pass it. We don't want to pass the moratorium or the legislation once, once we have an application that's landed on our desk, though.
True.
So.
Then it's irrelevant, I think, because they would have development rights at that point.
Yeah, because the idea of a moratorium, while we sort this out, might be attractive to commission, maybe not, I don't, I don't know.
I'm curious, what, how did they define the dollar store for that moratorium?
Um, that's a good question. I didn't find the exact language, I, uh.
Dollar in the name?
Oh, I sent you, so there's, in the packet, these are, these are live links, so you can read those, Cleveland, Cleveland Five News articles. I don't know if they have even a legal definition of what a dollar store is in their code.
How could you possibly?
Yeah, if, I would, I would doubt.
Insofar as it's already dying, you, you know, the, the, the dollar store, I, I don't know, I only know of one dollar store that still sells stuff for a dollar, everything else has gone to more than a dollar.
I think that was like their larger definition.
It's like, remember the dime store? You don't remember the dime, you remember the five and dime store. Well, that, nobody says dime store anymore, but when I was kids, everybody talked about the dime store, even though nothing was a dime anymore.
Yeah, Mr. Miller remembers that too, in my defense.
They're, they're talking about discount retails like Dollar General. I think probably the reason why that, I keep using that as an example, is because it's been the fastest growing retailer in its market for like several years, it's overtaken Walmart. So Dollar Generals are just like, all over the country, they're building new.
We got two in Sandusky alone.
True, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's Family Dollar, there's a, there's a whole market segment of these.
Right. Dollar General's not the only one, I mean, it's.
Certainly.
And I, I don't know where the old convenience stores fit into all this, you know.
Same way. And they would be subject to the same thing, I would think.
It seems to be. What's that, what's that place that smells awful that's in Sortino's Mall there?
Come on now, we're, we're on the record here.
Well, they never clean it, it smells awful there. It's a, whatever. Anybody know the name?
Where are we at? I'm not sure.
It used to be a convenience store, it's called something else now.
Sandusky Plaza.
Oh, yeah.
They lost their liquor license because they kept violating the law.
Convenience?
If I remember correctly, what's that?
The convenience store right up to the front?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, it used to be a convenience, now it's called something else.
I don't know, we all, the community calls it convenience.
Yeah, everybody knows it. But that would be subject, and they sell quite a bit of food and.
But they're fresh.
Gas stations are selling quite a bit of food in some cases.
Well, gas stations are exempt under some of these, uh, regulations or laws.
But at some point, the distinction blurs, because, you know, when are you, when are you a convenience food store that happens to sell gas?
Agreed.
Some convenience stores used to sell gas, so.
So what is the, what, I don't want to cut off discussion or debate. Any other additional comments on, on this, or do we want to give the staff some direction or?
Yeah, I feel compelled to make comments, because I have, I have feelings on, on this issue, not that they're well-formed and in the form of a recommendation or anything, but first, I may remember Ben Franklin Five and Dime. That's not the point. When I was in my twenties and living in Kansas City, just moved to Kansas City for a while, I selected my apartment based on its proximity in part to a convenience store, because to me, the essence of, of urban living, having been in a rural community and depending on a convenience store as the only place within many miles to get the things I needed, beer, Sunday paper, gallon of milk, I wanted to be within close walking distance of the Sunday paper, a hot cup of coffee and a fresh donut. That was my criteria. When I moved to Sandusky many years later, but, but quite a few years ago now, I again selected apartment in proximity to a convenience store, the one over on, on Perkins, for the same reason, Sunday morning, paper, good donut, you know, the, the basic requirements of life. But I had the ability to get in a car and go to a store. I just prefer not to have to do that all the time. What we're talking about here and why food desert is important to me here now, is that if we're envisioning a Sandusky future where you can actually live successfully downtown without having a car, because parking is increasingly an issue and like in major urban environments, be prepared to pay like an extra bedroom if you want a place to park your car, yeah, you need to have good food, everyday food, fresh fruits and vegetables and meats within walking distance. And then that transient overlay thing, you laid out the concentric circles of a five-minute, 10-minute, 15-minute walk. I think that approach is important, to be able to access serious groceries, because it's walkable to get what you need to live, not just the Sunday paper or a cup of coffee and a donut. You need to be able to get fresh meat, fresh vegetables, baked goods, more than just the bread that never molds, you know? So that, that's, that's my input. So, that, that's, that's my input about it. I think that, that when Cardinal Foods was supposed to get those carols that had foods of different vendors and stuff, you know, that seemed to be useful if we're going to have students living in dormitory high-rise apartments and stuff downtown. Vida tries to provide a little bit of that sort of thing, but jeez, when I walk in there, I couldn't afford to cook out of that store, you know? I, I like Laurie just fine, but prices are not at all competitive. You, you almost have to buy a car just to be able to afford to live at those prices. So, it's, it's not boutique, it's not just what you can get, it's at what price you can get. And I realize that major grocery stores work in a very small margin, it's like a 4% or something or less. Some said half a percent, I don't know how you could survive at that, but you need to have places that people can walk to, and that distance thing is an important element. I've seen, I've seen where convenience stores sell fruits and vegetables that you could actually live a pretty good living cooking out of them, where everything is not totally outrageously priced. I think that has to be considered too, though. I know there was in the transient overlay thing, was, or maybe it was in this discussion about the economic value of certain neighborhoods, and, I mean, that's an indication of how much money these people have to spend. Maybe the students are spending their parents' money and they can pay $4.50 for pasta, but most people can't.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Bishop, does Miss Castile have thoughts for staff?
Um, not really, just a comment, I, I really like this idea as well. I know everything that you said, I agree with, but also, I know a lot of people who depend on like the dollar stores as their grocery stores simply because they don't have transportation. Even myself with three kids under 10, when I have to go by myself, and I just think, oh, I just want to run to the dollar store and be able to just run in and get pasta noodles in sauce, and then I'm like, I want to have salad with toast, but there's no lettuce, there's no fresh produce anywhere in sight, and it is a struggle because now to take my three kids and go all the way to Kroger, Save-A-Lot, or, you know, wherever across town, because I live on Second Street, and there used to be the Cardinals kind of close, but now there really isn't anything by way of healthy food unless you go to, the building right over here has stuff, but it's, the prices can be, you know, challenging for some people. So, I think that having fresh produce or, you know, actually healthy food, living food, closer in close proximity for the places that don't have the big groceries is a great idea, and 100% support that.
There, there was that IGA over by, where it's a Firelands parking lot now, that was in, when I lived downtown, that's-
Okay, you're not-
Is that what I'm thinking of?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, were you finished, Ms. Castile?
Oh, I was finished, yes. I just thought, maybe I said the wrong grocery store I was thinking of. You said the IGA, but-
Yeah, there's an IGA over by, where it's a Firelands parking lot now, where I used to shop and buy interesting things.
Yeah, maybe that's, I'm not sure. The grocery store, but the point is that-
Cardinals, right?
Yes, that's, that's, okay, so I was correct. It's been a while.
We need to know what we want to do, we need simple rules, we can't engineer the marketplace. You try to micromanage the economy, we have world examples of why that doesn't work. What we can do is have simple rules. If you're going to sell food, it's not going to be solely unhealthy. If you're going to sell food, you're going to have healthy choices. That's the principle we need here. And the details of that will drive whether it works, whether it's doable or not. And you're going to have questions, like, okay, you know, if you sell candy bars at the checkout counter, is that food, well, probably not. What if it's cakes? What if it's, you know, at what point are you becoming a food purveyor, not selling a pack of gum and a roll of lifesavers at the checkout counter, right? So, so you, these are details that have to be in legislation, they have to be simple, they have to be enforceable, they have to be recognizable, and, and they have to make sense to your constituency, the electors, or, or, you know, apply in the long run. The only other point I'd make, because we talked about parking, is parking isn't the issue, it's whether you have a car or not. You don't, I think parking's a dimension of it, but we're going to have more and more people that do not own a car, either by choice, or because they can't afford it. You can't even, you can't even buy a, the, the, the price of your basic, cheapest possible drivable car has probably quadrupled in the last two years. Now, that's an anomaly in the market that'll probably sort itself out, but in the meantime, more and more people can't afford a car, and I hope more and more people choose not to have a car just because they don't need it and don't want it. If we create livable cities, which is what we're trying to do, of course, in Sandusky, walkable cities where you, you have a car by choice or not because you can't possibly live without it.
Mr. Miller, anything to add?
I will say, you know, on first kind of glancing at this, I'm always a little suspicious of how successful you can be writing ordinances to get the private market to do what you want. But when I look at this, I think that there's some stuff here that I think could work, and, and I think it's a good cause. I think that we want to have good, healthy eating options in walkable distance. I think simple and smaller is probably better. Like I see the one in here is 500 square feet of produce, I think that seems a little maybe excessive, like what's Vida right over here have? I don't know if they have necessarily produce, but I think that people in this area would agree that that's a good place to be able to walk to to get healthy food, right? So, we don't want to eliminate potential niche places that say, all right, if I got to sell something, this is what I'm going to do, and maybe keep it smaller in, in a particular location, so that, but just that there is some food. If you're going to sell some food, you got to sell a healthy option as well. And so, defining that, you know, we got, we got some work to do if we're going to try and write that, or is this, Aaron, something that you're planning to write up and then bring to us to approve and comment on?
That certainly could be a next step. I think that, I mean, so overall, my favorite is the Birmingham, Alabama example, the way that they define it. So, there, if you look at their definition for convenience retail, if we had a discount retailer coming in that was going to sell mostly packaged food, they would currently probably consider, be considered like general merchandise, or it would be allowed in most of the business, commercial districts. The way that they did theirs is they, they defined a convenience retail store, and that includes like bakeries, drugstores, specialty food stores, gift shops, newsstands, florists, small box discount stores are not included in that category. They specifically isolated a definition for small, small box discount retailers, because those are the types of commercial enterprises that have discounted food that are going to be attractive to communities that, you know, are trying to feed a lot of kids or are low-income, and they are the ones that generally sell a lot of packaged food, and if you want to live on ramen noodles and Cheetos, then you're good to go. And so, they, you know, isolated that definition, and those are the ones that they're regulating. So, they're saying, you know, so they're not, like, you can have a bakery and you're not, they're not trying to regulate that. You can have Vida, which is like a specialty, you know, food shop, and they're not trying to regulate that. They're specifically trying to say that there is a market, a really fast-growing market of small discount retailers that are overtaking markets and not allowing grocery stores to come in, basically. If we get a couple of the grocery stores, or, you know, we're out on Perkins, obviously, like Kroger's like, I want to be in a big, huge place with a huge bunch of parking. So, we might be able to get, if somebody comes in, like if CVS left and that building's empty, this would apply to somebody coming in to use that building, if we get it in place.
So, as you review this, keep in mind that, and it's been, this has been an accusation, that some of the ordinances have had, if not the effect, the intent, or at least part of the motivation has been to eliminate competition, to do good. So, bear in mind, there's a tendency for legislation to, you know, good legislation often only survives because somebody makes money on it, you know? I mean, I mean, we, we have SNAP because there's money to be made, you know, making sure that, that, that more people buy food, you know, have money to buy food. And it, it's, it's kind of absurd to give somebody a, you know, a, a SNAP card and, and then make their only choice, you know, buying pizza rolls at, at, at a drugstore, and they can't buy an apple or a banana or, or a gallon of milk. At the same time, the large grocery retailers might love it if you have, if you have draconian restrictions on small competitors to, to them. So, you have to make sure that this is within reach, doable, so that I would, I think it's important that legislation that will make the small food retailer say, yeah, I can do this, and make sure it's a level playing field, not, oh, the heck with it, I'm not selling food, because this is too hard. And I'm sure the large grocery retail, retailers would love to make it so onerous that the small food sellers will give up, throw up their hands and give up. We don't want to do that. We, we want to make sure it results in more choices, not fewer choices for the, for the residents here.
Well, the devil is certainly in the details, and I agree with everything that's been said in terms of it being objectively reasonable, so that it's easy to measure, whether it's square footage or percentage of space, and, and then definitions that are clear, and I did like the Birmingham, Alabama model legislation, that legislation as well, I thought that was, that was interesting. And then I think that, yeah, we're not trying to, we're not trying to ban these stores altogether, we're just trying to make sure that they have healthy choices that are available to our residents. As Mr. Ziloff said, we want to be a walkable, livable city, and getting access to good food, as Mr. Miller and Ms. Castile said, is, is critical. So, I think what you're hearing from the commission is a desire to look at some draft legislation, and it might be the kind of thing, Ms. Blair, that as you put it together, you might say, in some instances, you might say, well, here's option A and here's option B, you know, staff needs a little bit more direction and discussion about whether you want option A or B, whether that's a definitional section, or, you know, a space set aside, or, you know, those, those kinds of things. I think that's probably the best way to go about this. Am I fairly summarizing the will of the commission and looking at this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioners, unless there's further discussion on that topic, we have potentially a discussion on transient rental regulation, given the hour and the day. We can proceed or not, as your wish?
I'd be inclined to defer that discussion if-
Yes.
Well, I wouldn't mind deferring, but I could make about one comment and summarize where I'm at with it. There is at one point in the, in the proposal or the discussion that it laid out three options, and you could choose one or more of the options, do you remember that section? I, I would consider options one through three, more than option four, which is to do nothing. I think change, change needs to be coming, but all three of the options that include change, I think, have potential problems.
Yeah, I thought that changes the central business district definition was kind of a, a no-brainer. That's, that's one that I, I don't know if there'd be any disagreement on that.
Well, I had a question-
What, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
There was a proposal to add transient, transient dwellings to the central business designation.
The local business?
Local business, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I had questions about that, because it's not clear to me, do we have a proposal yet on that, or are we still formulating that?
I didn't want to come to you with a proposal to put a motion on the table to do that. I mean, we have it ready, it's highlighted, it's, I mean, it's ready if you wanted a motion-
Okay.
To adopt that.
Because the reason is, and I had this written in, John, we, I pointed out that I don't remember how local business got left out, but I think it may have been deliberate because, well, in, in part because, you know, a local business is unlikely to be a desirable apartment. If, if, if a defunct local business or obsolete local business structure gets turned into an apartment, it's usually a pretty crummy one. On the other hand, if it was done under the aegis of, of transient rental, it would be subject to all the, we, we can't make them make it look nice and attractive, all we can do is make them technically meet the standards, but, but at least it would be subject to that. And what, what I seem to get agreement on is if we, rather than simply allowing it, allow it in a different way, allow it in conditionally. In other words, instead of saying, yeah, you can apply for it, say, well, what do you want to do here? What's it going to look like before we say yes to it? Because otherwise, you're, you know, it's a neighborhood business, you know, are you, are you yanking, you know, the, the democratic process out of the, you know, out of the neighborhood? I mean, is, is it, what are you doing to the neighborhood, taking away their, you know, neighborhood business? So, there's, there's that. That was pointed out to me to a city, by a city commissioner, hey, you know, are you, are you stepping on a neighborhood here by letting somebody take away their neighborhood business? And I don't know what that means, but that was a concern, so.
Well, all, all good thoughts, relevant thoughts, to be sure. And the only other thing that I would add is that I thought it was particularly interesting that some communities set aside a portion of the revenues for low-income housing, because there is that push-pull issue there that was really highlighted very well by the materials that you sent, to the extent that you get higher income, higher value properties, you're driving local people out of the market, and, you know, you, you need to find a way, a balanced way to support everyone in the community. And, you know, there, there are so many stories about how all this transient rental came in, and now the folks who used to live there and would work in the community can't afford to find a home to live in anymore. So, we need to have that balance, but, but the committee, the commission has said that we would rather defer on that, so we'll defer. And if someone cared to make a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Stand adjourned.